Good morning. If everyone would please, shh, please take your seats. Good morning. It is Tuesday, the 27th of June. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenthal, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. Price moves. Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves. Mr. Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
If I could have everyone, please rise. I'm going to ask Mr. Price to lead us today in our salute of the flag.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, right hand over your hearts, and ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney and members, in this council chambers, we give folk a lot of latitude. But when we do the pledge of the flag, we don't give you a lot of flexibility. Mr. Herman disrupted the pledge of the flag for the second time. So sergeants, I want him removed from council chambers immediately. He was, as we were trying to say the pledge, he was speaking off, just to throw it off, Mr. City Attorney. You are out of here, Mr. Herman. You are out of here, Mr. Herman. You are out of here, Mr. Herman. Please remove him.
Mr. President, I just want to also note that anybody, if they wish to not participate, they have the right to sit quietly and not participate. I just want to put that on, on the record as well.
No, I agree.
And Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt the meeting as he is leaving.
We don't ask a lot, but when we do the pledge, we want to show respect.
And he's continuing to shout as he leaves.
Yes, he is, Mr. City Attorney.
Thanks.
In fact, to our guests that are here today, I want to ask you to do me a favor. Let's say the pledge again. Let's start this all over again. Mr. Price, please, everyone rise.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Madam Clerk, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, items one through seven and item 12 are items noted for public hearing.
Do we have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
Items eight through 56 are items for which public hearings have been held. Budget and Finance Committee reports for items 11 and 49 through 56 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, any specials, members? Let us prepare to vote on Mr. O'Farrell.
Item 56 special, please.
56 for Mr. O'Farrell. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes. And, Mr. President, those awards will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
So can we continue?
Yes, items 57 through 80 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Let's go to the next item.
Item 81 is an item for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Until I chat with Mr. Krikorian, I think that's the appropriate way to go.
And then, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
What I would like to do, why don't we bring up some of our general, general public comment? And quickly, let's reconsider item 36. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. Ms. Richardson, are you here? Jacqueline, come on.
As an American, I advocate putting back on the driver's license. The place of origin, a person who came from, born San Francisco, California, born Moscow, Russian, Russia, born Mexico City. I advocate that because it would save the police department and the city officials a lot of trouble if they don't pick on people because they don't have the right credentials. I'm assuming that people will make sure their fellow countrymen and themselves have the right credentials because they have to get good character to have driver's licenses. And they want to stay here so they'll maintain good character if their points of origin are their driver's licenses, like they did, like they were 30 years ago. I would assume that they would make sure they do the right thing as much as possible because they believe in their character. But the point of, is, will they get picked on or scorned or sectioned out because somebody wants them to lose what they have? That's the question that bothers me.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. So, Madam Clerk, that, it's my understanding, that's the last general, single general public comment, so we'll close that section of today's meeting. And now I'd like to go to the multiple section, and let's look for Mr. Walsh. Where's Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, you have items 1, 2, 3, 57, 58, 60, 61, 62, 63, 66, 70, and 74. And your general public comment, please come forward.
I should say three minutes. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Take a look. Tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Take a look. As far as these agenda items, 1 through 7, big problem. We need more alcohol licenses in this city. These scumbags up here have never rejected an alcohol license. Never. And here we have one, and it's necessity. Necessity or convenience. I'm telling you right now, the press is guilty of this. The press will not point out that we have the highest rate of drunk driving killings in America. And we have, outside of Las Vegas, more liquor licenses per square mile than anybody else. And let the blood of these people who are killed in these hit-and-run accidents be on the station managers and on these scumbags up here. Because as we sit here, 100%, we have, 100%, you don't give a syphilitic rat's ass about the public. People are being run over, and people don't, hey, when they run over someone, they press the pedal. Because 7% of the hit-and-run are apprehended. 7%. So you have a 93% chance, when you get drunk at one of these places that they got a license from, you have a 93% chance of escaping with murder. This is the only city where murder is okay as long as it concerns an alcohol license. And as far as some of these other things, and remember, I'm not one of these angry white guys who sing along on banks of rocks. When you do a good job, I point out that you do a good job. You do a good job with lighting, and you don't do a good job with traffic. Okay, Wells Fargo? Again, we had all these people show up here anti-Wells Fargo. Well, where are they now? They waited till they disappeared, and now they're item 56, Wells Fargo illegal activities investigation into the city's bank accounts against banking contractors. And this is a tap on the wrist to Wells Fargo.
Thank you. Let's give Mr. Walsh his one minute of general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. We have up here a bigamist. I'm telling you right now, you are responsible, including the press. And I asked the press, and I challenged the press. Someone fell off a ladder. It was the first time in the history of this city someone got killed. What was the cause of it? Shit does not happen. Shit does not happen. That person was killed because of a defective ladder. And you're, the blood is on your hands, Mr. Price. It's on your hands, Mr. Rue, until you scumbags up there give me a reason why the firefighter fell off the ladder. And don't give me gravity. We know the reason the firefighter fell off the ladder. Because you don't give a syphilitic rat's ass about people, the fire department. And he was dead, and the blood is on all your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Okay, members, let's vote on some items quickly before I call up the next speakers. Madam Clerk, let's vote on items 1, 2, 3, 59, 61, and 62. So let's open the roll. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Now let's go to items 65, 67, 68, 69, and 70. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We'll move now to items 72, 74, and 75. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. If you could pull Mr. Previn, I've got him. Mr. Previn, you have items 58, 60, 63, 64, 66, 61, I mean, 71, 73, 76, 77, 78, 80. And then your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. You forgot about 74, which is Best Best &amp; Krieger, a law firm who are waiving conflict.
Mr. Previn, you, no, I didn't forget. I told you the items that you could speak on. And so please speak to those items.
Please restore my time and don't speak during my comments.
No, you speak to the items. Go ahead.
Closed session, which we also have an opportunity to sign up, and I did. And that is the HMMY Orchid LLC matter, which has to do with...
Mr. Previn, speak on the items that I just gave. Hold his time. I told you that, I'm not going to debate you. I gave you, Mr. Previn, please be quiet. I told you the items that you could speak on today. That's it. I'm not going to debate it. So speak on those items, or you can return to your seat. It's your call. So go ahead.
Thank you. Please restore the time that you took.
No, no, I'm not.
Well, then you don't restore the time.
Okay, Mr. Previn, you want to go to general public comment? Do you want to go straight to general public comment? Then stay on the items.
Item 58, sir, is the George Lucas Museum. And I would request that Marquise Harris-Dawson and Curran Price from the 8th and 9th District, and you, make it so that that museum is open to the public, so that youth from around the area who have suffered will be admitted to this great museum and not face another universal studios like entrance fees. So I would ask that. This is a planning rush-through, and everybody wants a great museum, but let's make sure we're allowing the neighborhood to get in. Item number 60, you're working diligently with the MOU for 22, the Fire Chief Unit, where you're increasing by $1.7 million in additional costs. And this is in the context of Mr. Englander's OVB Valley Bureau getting a brand-new office because they, it's so difficult for them to have to travel from headquarters, which the public is outraged by, quite frankly. Item number 63, you're increasing from $5.4 to $11.5 million in Bonin's lawsuit that they are fighting at the airport around runway litigation. Morrison and Forster is the attorneys. Item number 64 is the Otis Elevator Maintenance Contract. The question is, it's $4 million over five years, but does it cover all of the elevators that the city has, or just the Otis elevators? That's an important detail. Item number 66 is the Liner LLP Law Firm. These are a group who are being engaged to fight class actions against the DWP. The DWP's got news today. You could read Dakota Smith's article in the Essential that was whipped around because we've given them a generous new package, despite Mayor Garcetti and everybody's promise to hold them accountable. So that is a bit frustrating. Item number 71 is the First Quarterly Report. And I want to just jump over to Mr. Buscaino, who's doing an excellent job. CD15, he announced that he's going to be shuffling some money from here to there, but there was no sum. I had to do a little research. The sum that they're shuffling is, they're making a $7,000 fund into a $80,000 fund. So $71,000 or something like that is moving in. So you ought to put that in the agenda so that people know and can react appropriately as the community and get that money into their community, not somewhere else. Item number 73 is Mr. Englander's effort to get the LA Police Fire Games, or the worldwide Fire Games here. And, you know, what can I tell you? We are coming up with $315,000 in some kind of a waived fee for your treasured partners at AEG, which are the folks who run the, you know, the convention center on a contract in the LA Live. I mean, these guys should be eating some of that cost. They're all going to do great. All their concessions go way up, and the public covers the, some fees. I don't get it.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Now, Madam Clerk, give him his minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I noticed that item 36, you got the bus bench funds into the general fund. Well done. My public comment has to do with the Wells Fargo matter that was heard up in Budget and Finance yesterday. And you've got several items on the agenda today, including elongating their agreement and then promising to look at ways to hold them accountable. But, sir, you invited them to Taste of Soul. They held their banner up above City Taste of Soul while Mike Fier was prosecutor. We said, "Take it down. It's not appropriate." And you didn't. Number one. Number two, Mr. Krikorian has taken a new approach up in Budget Finance. Rather than having a closed session, which we wrote about and won an LA Press Club Award Sunday night, thank you for the congratulations, we're now having private meetings where there's a VIP list, where Mr. O'Farrell's treasured partners are admitted and everybody else is pushed out. And then you can't sign up because when I tried to sign up, there was an LAPD officer named Al Neal, terrific guy, but not in a terrific role, intimidating me, saying, "Who are you and who is this guy? And why is he trying to go to the meeting?" As I said, because I'm a member of the public. So that's a big red flag, and I'm not accepting retaliation from LAPD at any...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, if you'd call up or bring up on my screen Antonia Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, items 57, 63, 71, 73, 78, 79, and then general public comment.
What happened to the 50s? You said 71? Frickin' hell.
57, 63, 71, 73.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The ill-fated mayor's emergency declaration is to apologize to all American taxpayers and state we will not legally subsidize all wetback and gang legal funds. Deportation, deportation, deportation. God, that feels so good. Number one is number 63. Hell, no, these highfalutin schmucks and shyster legal hacks are only there to rob us taxpayers and all our beloved pilots and military aviators. It's waste, fraud, and abuse to hire the Morrison and Forster LLP firm. So again, this is nothing more than political favors. Use the money wisely and give the financial bonuses to all our beloved pilots and co-pilots and engineers. You gorgeous, brilliant, hot mama studs, they need it and they bust their butts night and day to bring commerce and the flow of trade into this country. God bless America. 64. God bless President Donald Trump, El Jefe, the great Moses, who will reinvigorate...
You got to go to 71 now, Ms. Ramirez.
Oh, 71. Thank you, sir. You're very kind. What is public safety in LA? It doesn't exist because Mitchell Englander cancels all public safety meetings. Jesus Christ. I don't know if he works or he just sits there and looks dumb.
Stay on this subject.
Seven, eight. Are you kidding me? Fraud, waste, and abuse, and misappropriation of funds. Buscaino and Harris-Dawson, all local neighborhoods are a cesspool of sewage with urine, feces, and vomit. The aroma is a foul stench. Again, deport the wetbacks and the gangbangers and the crackheads. Get them off the streets and you will improve the neighborhood.
Stay on this subject.
Again, we're talking about the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods are crack-infested, and we got too many wetbacks and gangbangers dumping their trash and all their filth on the streets. We have to pass by the crap every day. 79. Hell, no. LA is a city known for waste and abuse, corruption, and fraud. Subsidizing all illegal chungo Latino wetbacks and chungo gangbangers is what we're doing. We're not providing public housing to all our law-abiding citizens. We're providing housing to the wetbacks and gangbangers. LA is uninhabitable. It's a stench. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves because if it were me, I'd clean up house right away. And God bless Donald Trump. You know, he does his job, and we're going to wait on Donald Trump to clean up that neighborhood.
Stay on the item.
Because again, our city council mayors, our city council members, and our mayor have not done anything to improve the quality of life for law-abiding residents who live in these gang-infested and wetback and gang-infested and all these drug-infested neighborhoods. So again, we need Donald Trump, El Jefe, the great Moses.
Okay, let's go to her general public comment.
Thank you, sir, very much. We celebrate two birthdays. First, mi ex-presidente Vicente Fox de la República Mexicana will celebrate on July the 2nd. Feliz cumpleaños, Vicente Fox. Elegant man. And today, June 27th, our vivacious and supersonic, brilliant, patriotic, wholesome white man, the honorable ex-mayor of Anaheim, Kurt Pringle, who has the Midas touch, brought immense prosperity to Anaheim and honored our constitutionally First Amendment. This gifted and talented public servant truly, honorably, and courteously served the residents of Anaheim with dignity, friendliness, respect, and love. And he never threw anybody out of the chambers. He allowed every speaker whatever they had to say, even if they even were slightly rude to him. He would allow them to speak uncensored, uninterrupted, and with no ill feelings. He was a lovely man with a contagious smile who just loved this city.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Okay, on item 58, let's close the public hearing on item 58. I believe I have a card on Ms. Autry, Yvonne Michelle Autry. You have item 63 and general public comment. And I'm told on items 71 and 73, Ms. Autry, are you here? Ms. Autry? Ms. Autry, are you here? Then you need to come forward.
I'd like to support my colleague Antonia in urging the city to do something to restrict the attacks on women, black women, single women. We're not witches. We're not to be used as elevators, sources of energy, sex objects, sex slaves for the immigrant, predominantly Mexican.
Stay on the item, Ms., you're on item, was it 63 and 71?
63 and 71 relative to the police, the funding for the police. That was a preface to my public comment because of the immigrants that are being used by...
Well, just stay on this item. You'll get to that.
That was a preface. Relative to 63, that was for the police, I believe. Now, for modern technology, I'm speaking up for the targeted individuals. The modern technology and the funding and the grants are being used to finance human, guinea pig, test specimen target practice for training purposes for the New World Order police. police. That money must not be allocated further to authorize human, guinea pig, or science experiments for the New World Order FBI and CIA. One of the targeted individuals, they're using laser beams, microwaves, gamma rays. This is modern technology, and they are electronic weapons. This is a nationally or internationally recognized group of targeted individuals financed by the federal government. As the Tuskegee experiments were perpetrated--
Mr. President, the speaker's on topic.
Get back on the item, Ms. Autry.
That's relevant to the technology and the grant, the money that you will be allocating. So I'm urging you to--
Well, you've spoken enough on that item. You want to go to item 71 or 73?
Now, you can never speak enough when I'm being targeted, I'm being--
No, Ms. Autry, one minute per item. You've been here long enough to know the rules. So now you're on 71 or 73.
Well, now, I can never speak enough when there are others that are silent, and you're liable, because it's happening in your city.
Okay, let's give her her one minute for general public comment. So you could go ahead.
So I think one of the reasons that you discouraged the Skid Row Neighborhood Council is because we were going to expose how the Skid Row residents were being used for these human experiments, predominantly melanated people, black people, used by the federal government. As the Tuskegee Airmen, black men like yourself were being used in federally funded experiments, covered up until a black female nurse exposed it. I'm sure she was called crazy and delusional as well. We will not support funding for this experimentation, the sex slaves that are used, and covering up again, the abuse of predominantly low or poor women. And the immigrants are being used, or they're being commissioned in this capacity to target, to surveil, to sexually harass women, witch-hunting us, abusing us, illegally entering our, our rooms. And the police know this. The black women that have been murdered and other women as well, I exposed this. The police know, and you know. This must stop and stop funding and allowing these immigrants, Mexican and Spanish mafia, okay, to abuse women.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Thank you very much. So that closes our multiple comment section. Madam Clerk, if we could vote on reconsideration for items nine, 10, and 11. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now let's vote on the items themselves. That's items nine, 10, and 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, before Senator, Senator, before we go on to the next item, I want to recognize a former colleague of mine, the great Senator Martha Scootia. Wave your hand. Let's give her a round of applause for all of her phenomenal service to the city and the state of California. Thank you. Okay, now let's move on to, let's vote on items 57, 63, 64, and 66. Please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now, if we could vote on item 71, 73, 74, 75, and 76. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now let's vote on item 77, 78, and 79. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, there are requests to send items forthwith. That would be 15, 48, 51, 53, and 73.
Without objection, so order. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Krikorian, you want to get, give your opinion on the way to proceed on item 81, I believe it is?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Item 81 was considered in Budget and Finance. It is a routine settlement that can be considered an open session unless members have questions or concerns. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. You want to read the item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, in the case entitled Orchid LLC versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to accept a refund of interest in an amount not to exceed $287,500.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now we can vote on items four and item seven. Four and seven, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
It's my understanding that we have a card on item five. You want to pull up that person's name? Okay. Noel? And you're waving? All right, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item six, I have a card on that item as well. Greg Indem? I'll wave back. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
57 and 68, if we could send those items forthwith. Mr. O'Farrell, are we ready to start on item 56?
Yes.
So the floor is Mr. O'Farrell.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and just say a few words about the divestment action that this council is taking from Wells Fargo Bank and what the action is today. It's item 55, 6 instructs the Office of Finance to develop a new RFP for the city's general banking services contract, consistent with guidelines established under the Community and Reinvestment Act. This motion purposefully uses the rationale developed by the Federal Office of the Comptroller of the Currency as a method for council action. Divestment, finally, this motion directs the Office of Finance to begin the process to divest from Wells Fargo, an institution the city has lots of recent experience and activity with. Last fall, this council took unanimous action opposing the Dakota Access Pipeline. In the last couple of years, it's come to light the massive and fraudulent activities of Wells Fargo Bank, specifically targeting low-wage earners, undocumented immigrants, and Native Americans across the United States. And colleagues, it's time for us to endeavor to only do business with ethical financial institutions that have high standards and ethical standards. This is a very fiscally sound approach to taking a look at what divestment will mean, and it's a very complicated, intricate matter. But I want to really express gratitude to our Chair of Budget and Finance, Paul Krikorian, for his leadership on this. It was discussed and, and public comment was heard in committee yesterday. And I want to thank Paul Coretts and Mike Bonin, who I worked together on this issue. And I think this is a giant step forward for the city to set the tone and to say that to do business with the city and with city taxpayers, you absolutely must have higher ethical standards than what Wells Fargo has demonstrated in the last couple of years. It's inexcusable, and we should never, ever tolerate it. So I want to thank also the Native American County City Commission. I also want to thank the Office of Finance and then our city, Mike Fuhr, who's been, city attorney, who's been doing some really great work on getting that $50 million settlement for the city of Los Angeles and those who are affected by these fraudulent practices. And I ask for a unanimous i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me call on Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my colleague, Mr. O'Farrell, and his staff for all the good work they've done on this, and Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Bonin. And thank you for hearing this today, Mr. President. Also, I want to thank the advocates for bringing this issue to us. We're living in a time where we need to pay very close attention to the institutions we do business with. Are they on the side of human beings, or are they simply in business to extract a profit at whatever cost and with no regard for human welfare, for the environment, or the overall health of the planet? Wells Fargo has repeatedly broken its trust with the public. Most relevant for today, it financially supports the controversial Dakota Access Pipeline, a project which is proposed to cross the lands of the Standing Rock Sioux and could potentially devastate their water and the land that it crosses. It's unconscionable for the federal government to allow pipelines to be built on the meager lands that they set aside for indigenous communities. And as the negative impacts of climate change to continue to worsen at a rapid pace, it's unconscionable that the federal government would allow significant fossil fuel infrastructure at all to be built. And with all we're doing to support human rights and fight climate change as a city, it is unconscionable for us to continue to do business with any company that actively supports projects that are working directly against us. I don't want to just send a symbolic message, and I think with this, we actually can change the entire system. This motion sets in, in motion a process to do that, using the city's purchasing power as a tool for good. And for that reason, I ask for your i-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just want to rise to congratulate and thank Councilmember O'Farrell for bringing this issue and seeing it through. It's, one of the more important things we can do as a city is recognize the impact we can have on the economy, the impact that we can have on the business sector, if it's banking or any other sector. The other thing I want to thank you for personally is, this gave our team an opportunity to take a hard look at this institution, because we said, "Well, if you would invest in the Dakota Access Pipeline and you would have these practices to gouge money from working and poor people, what else are you doing?" So we took a hard look at their lending and asked them to give an account for their lending in South LA broadly and the 8th District specifically. And you can just imagine what we found. Unspoken, but very, very persistent and consistent redlining. And so, it's always good when somebody brings up an injustice, because when you find one injustice, often you find others. And so, we want to thank you for that, and it's an issue that we're going to take up with the bank, in addition to supporting your motion regarding the pipeline and the other activities they've done here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. I now recognize Mr. Mike Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for submitting this motion, Mr. Coretts as well. And Mr. Harris Dawson, thank you for, for your comments and for your insights on this. We actually had, thanks to Mr. Krikorian, a very long and a very thoughtful discussion about this issue yesterday, that sort of wrestled with the complexities of getting to where we want to go. And, and what became abundantly clear, I think we all knew it going in, but what became abundantly clear is that while this discussion started with Wells Fargo, this issue and this problem is much bigger. And the way the city of Los Angeles intends to address the problem as a result of, of this action is to actually look bigger than just at Wells Fargo, but to look at our investments generally and who we do business with. As so many of us have noted, what we do and how we do it sends a huge message because of how big we are, and it makes an impact because of how big we are. Two decades ago, there was not a huge market for recycled materials, until the city of Los Angeles made it a policy that it was going to purchase only recycled materials in certain categories, and it created a market. We can create a demand for a different way of conducting business financially. And as I noted yesterday, there are winds of change in the air in this country. There is tremendous, deep, wide, and growing discontent with the, the financial industry in this country and the way our economy feels and is rigged in so many different ways. And the winds of change on this issue did not begin in the city. It began in Seattle and others. But those winds aren't going to stop here. They're going to gain additional gusts here, and they're going to grow stronger, and they're going to blow further. So this is an important thing. I'm glad we're doing it, and I'm glad that, that we had the foresight to think about this thoughtfully and comprehensively and make this not just symbolic, but actually make this comprehensive and substantive as we go forward. So thank you for the way you did this meeting yesterday, Mr. Krikorian. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for your kind words. But I want to really rise and thank Mr. O'Farrell, not just for raising this issue, because it's easy to raise issues, but for pursuing this issue in a way that would be consistent with the, the kind of impact that Mr. Bonin just described. Because it is true that America listens to what Los Angeles does, and we see it time and time again in our gun violence legislation, in our, the steps that we've taken against climate change, and in so many other ways. Los Angeles has set a standard, which California often follows, and then America often follows, which means that it's important to get things right in this council and to not just make statements, but to get things right. And Mr. O'Farrell, in pursuing this, has done it in a methodical, thoughtful, analytical way that's taken into account impacts on the city's taxpayers, impacts on the business community, but also sending a very strong statement about what the values that this city stands for really are, and with the expectation that those that we do business with will reflect those values. And so, and that's hard work. And I really want to thank Mr. O'Farrell and all of the members of the Budget and Finance Committee who considered this matter at such length yesterday, and the members of the public who came on all sides of the issue to participate, because it really was a very substantive, thoughtful discussion that I appreciate very much. There's another aspect to this as well that's not part, that's not on the agenda today, but it is a part of this issue. And that is, and Mr. Harris Dawson kind of alluded to this, once these practices of Wells Fargo's consumer banking unit came to light, we initiated an effort to examine all of the banking relationships that the city has with Wells Fargo to make sure that the city was not likewise victimized by creation of new accounts and other things. And it was reported to the Budget and Finance Committee yesterday that, in fact, the CAO has done a comprehensive review of all that. There is no evidence that any city accounts are anything other than what they had intended to be. So I just wanted to make sure that you all understood that as well. But that will be part of the report back, as well as a number of other issues that, that came up about Wells Fargo's relationship with the city, what it would mean to extract the city from those relationships, what the potential alternative providers of these financial services might be. All of that, because of Mr. O'Farrell's work, will be part of the report back, so you'll have an entire body of information to be able to make thoughtful decisions about this that reflect our values and protect the city's interests as well. So congratulations, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. I ask for your i-vote.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. After looking over their committee report, one of the things I mentioned in committee yesterday that's not on here is that I also ask for the Department of Finance to report back on all, a list of all financial institutions that are currently financing the Dakota Pipeline. So I just want to make sure that gets added to the committee report, which is not on here. Is that okay?
I, I would need some--
Thank you, Mr. President. That is, in fact, consistent with our discussion yesterday and probably should have been included in the report, so the report can so reflect.
Thank you.
All right. So there are no more speakers on the queue. Members, let's-- All right. So, there are no more speakers on the queue. Members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, let's move to item 12. Madam Clerk, we're going to vote on item 12, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. All right. Now, members, we're going to move to items 36 and 58. I'd like to recognize Mr. Price at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's the honor of a lifetime to address you today on a historic project being proposed in the 9th District. Doesn't get much bigger or better than this. This is a project, frankly, that needs no introduction, the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art. At $1.5 billion, this is the largest private gift in our city, in our state, or in our nation's history. And I'd like to, and I'd like for Los Angeles to be, to make history today also. I want to emphasize that, thanks to the generosity of George and wife Melody, there will be no cost to taxpayers to build this state-of-the-art facility. The latest museum proposed for Expo Park would include exhibition spaces, theaters, a library, lecture halls, classrooms, a cafe, and restaurant. Plans also call for the dedication of 11 acres of publicly accessible green space. Dedicated to the art of visual storytelling, the museum promises to offer its more than 1 million visitors annually a surreal and dynamic experience. It will include paintings, illustrations, photography, and moving images. As you can imagine, the response from the local community has been overwhelmingly positive. Time and time again, representatives with the Lucas Museum have demonstrated that they have every intention to be a good neighbor. They've taken time to meet with me and representatives from our Slate Z Promise Zone Collaborative, many of whom are with us today. We've discussed the investment to the local community and beyond. This includes the addition of new construction and permanent jobs with a commitment to hire locally, inclusion of opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses, and improved access and education for our local youth. In addition, we're going to be upgrading the Soboroff Soccer Fields at Expo Park. Bottom line is, the Lucas Museum will create jobs, increase tourism, and economic growth in the city, and it will add to the economic value of our Expo Park campus. Colleagues, thank you for your time. I respectfully ask that you support this historic and transformative project in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Price, it's my understanding we're going to bring up some staff?
Yes, we're going to ask Don to come to the table and...
Because I was going to vote on it, man. I was going to, all right, let's go.
There may be some questions, and Don, why don't you give us an overview?
Welcome.
Exciting opportunity. Good morning, Mr. President. Honorable council members, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Don Bocagallope. Difficult name. I'm the president of the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art, and it's a pleasure to present to you, some of you again and to some of you for the first time. The Museum of Narrative Art was a vision long held by George Lucas, our founder and board chair, and his wife Melody Hobson, our co-chair. George and Melody, for many years, have been collectors of art of many kinds. George, of course, is one of the legendary makers of popular art in the 20th and 21st centuries. And through their making and collecting, the vision emerged of an institution, a museum, that can inspire and educate the broadest population in South Los Angeles. Museum of Narrative Art that focuses on the storytelling power of art, of works of art in a variety of media, in a variety of cultures, works of art from history. If you think about it, the human impulse to tell stories goes all the way back to the cave paintings of some 20,000 and 30,000 years ago. The idea of sharing our stories, whether they be individual stories, family stories, community stories, political stories, all of the ways in which art has told and communicated the important elements of life to other people. And so, the museum will collect and present works of art throughout our history, from the earliest days of mankind making images to the very latest of digital technologies utilized by artists to tell the broadest stories, and in so doing, inspire children, families, makers, all of us who have a story to tell, to be able to tell their own stories in their own means. And so, the museum collects and presents exhibitions in a variety of cultural forms, in a variety of media, that really breaks down boundaries among what is traditionally known as fine art, popular art, media arts. We're not interested in those boundaries. We're interested in the storytelling capacity and the import of the way in which stories are told through community art forms. So, the museum will be a location for education, for inspiration. We will be a partner to other institutions, both museums, cultural groups, educational institutions, in telling those stories, and also offer children and families the opportunity to learn the very techniques of making narrative art forms. So, we'll have pre-professional training as well as hands-on experiences for every age group and every background. So, the museum, I think, will be an extraordinary draw, both for the community, but also for Los Angeles, and a worldwide institution that breaks down again these boundaries among art forms. We are anxious to get going. Obviously, it's been a long road getting here, and we've been thrilled to have the reception in Los Angeles and the south part of Los Angeles that we've received, the alignment of many community members, organizations, and neighbors in South LA and Expo Park who have been really unmitigated in their support for the museum and what it will bring to South Los Angeles and Expo Park. I'm very happy to answer any questions you may have or talk further about the collection and the programs.
Maybe you could spend a moment, if you will, walking us through this schedule?
Sure. So, our hope is that we will be able to mobilize for groundbreaking toward the end of this year and the beginning of next year. The program will be built in phases. We have the moving of Soboroff Soccer Field to the southern southwest quadrant of the park with improvements made to the new field, much-needed improvements, and make that first on our agenda. Second, we will be building underground parking so that the entire 11 acres that is currently asphalt parking will become park space, and the parking will be replaced underground. So, that'll be the next phase. And then, as you see on the slide now, excuse me, the entire strip will be greened for access to the public lands. So, there'll be a wonderful landscape plan, 11 acres of new park space. The museum will then break ground, probably at the beginning of 2018, for construction. Will be in construction for about 36 months, and will plan to open the museum, if successful, in 2021. So, it's about a four-year program from start to finish with many phases within, and making sure that we're accessible, and the part, both the soccer field and the parking will be available as well.
Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I can't tell you how excited I am that this is going to happen. It's a real honor and an opportunity for the city of Los Angeles. You didn't mention anything about George Lucas's own projects, so I'm wondering whether anything that happened long ago in the galaxy far, far away will be represented here in this museum.
Thank you for the question. Yes, indeed, film will be a large part of the museum's program, both in terms of the collection and in terms of the exhibitions. And within the film archives that the museum will own and be able to exhibit, there is a very large archive of all of George Lucas's own filmmaking enterprises, including the Star Wars saga, the Indiana Jones sequels, et cetera. And the, within that archive are all of the early concept drawings, the storyboard drawings, the costume designs, the set pieces, the props, everything from Luke Skywalker's first lightsaber to Darth Vader's costume and helmet. But in addition to that, all of the art forms that go into the making of those films, so the set painters, the costume designers, the costume makers, all of the various arts that go into the making of film as a narrative art are part of the collection and part of the program. So, we'll not only show all of those elements from those galaxies, that galaxy far, far away, but also other great films. So, we have works from The Wizard of Oz and The Ten Commandments and Casablanca, and all of these great films that showcase the history of that great narrative form, up to and including George Lucas's great films.
Well, thank you. I can't tell you how exciting this is. I promise you all will be one of the first in line.
Look forward to it.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and congratulations to Mr. Price and the mayor and all the folks who helped roll out the red carpet for the Lucas Museum, a project that we're very, very excited to have, and that is a very significant gift to the city and a gift to our part of town. I wanted to hear some about how you expect to engage young people and students. You're right across the street from, you're right between Manual Arts High School and University of Southern California. We've got so much creativity and untapped talent in this part of the world, and this museum seems to offer an opportunity to realize some of that. And so, I'd love to hear some about how you expect to engage young people.
Thank you, council member. Absolutely. Education is at the heart of the museum's mission and really the, what created the impetus for the museum. And on a daily basis, we'll have a whole host and range of educational programs, inspirational programs for children of all ages and families. And they'll range from school visits when we'll be tied to school curriculum and be able to teach through art a whole range of different subject matters, whether it be social sciences, or math, or literature, or language. And so, that'll be the basis for school programming. On top of that, we'll have all kinds of workshops and hands-on activities, both on a day-to-day drop-in basis, but also classes and summer camps and week-long activities that will engage students in actually making, so that they'll have experience making paintings, sculpture, films, digital works of art. All the different artworks that they'll see in the museum will be available to them to learn how to do. And that will range from young children experiencing their first hands-on exposure to those art forms, all the way up to and including high school students that might be thinking about or might be interested in investigating career paths that will be involved in the making, the creative industries, particularly film. And so, all of that, that range, in terms of age, in terms of type of material that they'll be engaged with, will be available on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. And certainly, within Expo Park, we'll have experiences partnering with our other colleagues in the park, the other great museums in the park, but also with the schools and educational institutions that you mentioned to be able to craft projects and programs that will be specific to the needs of the community, to the needs of school groups, to the needs of particular classrooms and teachers as well. So, a very wide range of educational offerings, and that will be core to everything that we do.
Mr. Price.
Don, just to follow up on my colleague's question about education and youth, because that really is an important foundation. We were all impressed, stakeholders were impressed with the willingness of the museum to begin these programs early. Could you talk a little about that, how some of these activities will be phased in even before the museum is built?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. One of the, I would call it a luxury of time that we have is we'll be under construction for several years, and during that time, we'll have opportunities to partner with our colleagues, to partner with the community, to partner with schools and educational institutions, to begin to pilot some of the activities that will take place in the museum. So, our intention is to roll out a series of projects that will, that will give us an opportunity to engage with the community and the community to engage with the museum long before we open the museum. So, we'll have experiments, so to speak, with educational programs, with exhibitions, with partnerships that we can offer in those early days. So, I would say, from the time of 2018, when we break ground, hopefully, to the time that we open, we'll engage in a full slate of pilot opportunities to begin to roll out some of those programs. And the added benefit for the museum will be, for anyone who has never heard of a Museum of Narrative Art, who doesn't really know what to expect when the museum is opened, it will give us an opportunity to preview what the museum will be about, what the offerings will be, what the relevant piece of the museum will be for any particular child, family, community group, to be able to engage early on and develop a relationship with the museum such that when we open, when the full scale of programs is offered, we'll have relationships in the community across many different lines, so that those folks will be part of the museum's family and quite comfortable coming to the museum, and that's certainly our hope. So, those will be kind of pre-opening activities that will be engaged in, and those will carry forth into the museum after we open.
Mr. Root.
Thank you. This is a very exciting project, and I know about, was it six months ago or a year ago when this was first talked about, and I know the leadership of Council Member Corrin Price and the mayor fought real hard for this museum to be in its rightful place here in Los Angeles. You know, I'm very interested in these community programs. So, I'm assuming, will it, will you start doing outreach before the museum even gets built or close to, near its completion?
Yes, indeed. Thank you again. In addition to the educational programs and some of the pilots that will roll out, we will continue, we've been doing for some time, as you know, many meetings with our colleagues in community organizations. Slate Z has been a wonderful partner to us in South Los Angeles, but reach out to a variety of grassroots organizations, educational, cultural groups, to make sure that we're doing what is needed in the community, but also so that we have partners to collaborate on a variety of programs that are culturally specific, that tell stories of different communities. Thinking about the breadth of narrative art across the world, in every culture, there is art-making that tells stories. And for us to be engaged in specific Los Angeles communities, as diverse as Los Angeles is, to be able to share those stories, to explore them, to be inspired by them, and in turn, to be able to speak to those communities is one of our greatest accomplishments as we go forward. So, we're very excited to get started on those programs and the pilot projects, but also continuing those conversations in the variety of communities that we will ultimately serve. Thank you.
Great. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. We just had some special guests arrive, but I do want to afford Mr. Buscayino the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, let us welcome George Lucas, ladies and gentlemen, to the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you, Mr. Lucas, for believing in this city and his beautiful wife, Mrs. Lucas. We love you. We thank you. Well, I too am fired up. When the announcement was made, colleagues, that Lucas Museum will come to Los Angeles, my office erupted with joy. The fact that, once built, this museum will be a celebration of storytelling, a celebration of arts and culture, because that's who we are. The city of Los Angeles prides itself on arts and culture, and, as you know, we are the epicenter of the creative capital of the world. And what an added addition the Lucas Museum would be to this great city. Mr. Price, Mr. Mayor, thank you for landing this museum in our great city. We can't wait for the doors to open, and we thank the Lucas family for believing in our city. We also thank our friends in Chicago for moving this museum west to our great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. I'd now like to invite our mayor, Eric Garcetti, Ms. Hobson, and Mr. Lucas to please join the mayor, and we've been waiting for this day, so it's so good. Well, Mayor, it's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you.
But it's really a pleasure to see the rest of you as well. In fact, for the heck of it, let's just applaud for the heck of it, you know? Because this is a good day. The floor is yours, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Always a pleasure to be back in these chambers. Thank you to our esteemed city council. Thank you to the people of LA, and thank you so much to George Lucas and Melody Hobson for bringing this vision of creativity, of culture, of a dynamic presence in a dynamic city that will inspire generations to come to be creators and to seize their dreams. And today, this vote that you take will be not just for those people who live here in Los Angeles today, not just for folks who will come to Los Angeles from around the world, but will be for lifetimes of people who will be able to come and to see what is possible, possible both in this city, in this country, and in this world. I had a conversation with George a few years ago when we heard there was the museum perhaps moving from California. And he very politely took my call and he said, "Look, I just want to tell you, it's probably 95% chance that we're headed to Chicago." And I said, "You mean we got a 5% chance?" And that's all we needed to introduce ourselves, to introduce our city. And that's all we needed, to introduce ourselves, to introduce our city, and to let you know how much we loved you and the vision that you put forward. And I think this is a great day for Los Angeles, because it shows two things about this city. One is that we never stop creating. This is not A, but the creative capital of the world in so many ways. We never look at today like we did yesterday. We see in tomorrow new possibilities. And when we see what this museum will do to take children who live in the area, to inspire the community in South Los Angeles in the Ninth District, to be part of what is changing in the heart of this great town, we know that it will have a social impact second to none. But this is also an extraordinary artistic statement, both inside and outside. One of the boldest pieces of architecture that we've seen in this world, and internally, the art that this family has collected, and I want to thank Jeffrey Katzenberg, who, I don't think he's here today, but Jeffrey, who was kind of a relentless Angelino, I'm sure you can count in the hundreds the number of phone calls he sent to all of us, but he was a champion with others who stepped forward, Eli Broad and others, who talked about how this town wants to get things done, and that's the second point today. This isn't just about creativity, inspiration. This is a town that showed we know how to get deals done, and your vote today will be the closing of that. That department stepped forward and said, "How can we accelerate this? How quickly can we get a groundbreaking?" And more importantly, "How quickly can we get a ribbon cutting on what will be this fabulous museum, a museum that'll be much more than just a place to look at art, but a place to feel humanity?" As George mentioned to me once, imagine being a child who can go in and see what it was like, when George Lucas imagined what it would be like to get to the heavens, and then walk to the other side of this exposition park and see how we actually did it as human beings at the California Science Center. To be able to go from a place where we will host the Olympics for a third time and to see African-American art and our natural history, and to see then what artists have done to articulate those connections that we have with the world around us, this will certainly be second to none. So I don't think I need to urge your i-vote today. I think it's going to be a clear slam dunk, but for the people of L.A., for four million souls in a 10-million-person county, in an 18-million-person metropolitan area in this great state, I just want to say thank you for what you both are doing for us and for this world. Thank you for bringing that vision, as you've always done, to touch our lives, and thank you for choosing Los Angeles. And with that, let me turn it over to our two superstars here, to George Lucas and Melody Hobson. Please join me again in giving them a round of applause.
Well, as they say, three is a charm. This has been a very hard and long journey. My joke is, who knew it would be so hard to give away a museum? But it really has been something that has challenged us, and it's a bit emotional that we stand here today to see this dream become a reality. We never knew it would be hard, except for here in Los Angeles. It hasn't been hard at all. It has actually been quite easy. And because of that, it's been very, very clear to us that despite this long journey, the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art was always meant to be in Los Angeles. So I want to first start by offering some thanks, first and foremost, to Mr. Mayor, to Council President Herb Wesson, to the entire City Council for your support. It has been huge and greatly, greatly, greatly appreciated. We also want to thank Councilmember Corinne Price for his leadership and welcoming us with open arms to CD9 and doing such a great job of spurring enthusiasm and support for the project. We want to thank our soon-to-be neighbors in Exposition Park. Of course, we know USC very, very well, George's alma mater, and where I also have an honorary degree, and the world-class museums that are there, that will be in our backyard, all of which are in Expo Park, which will be our new home, and they have done such a great job of welcoming us into the family. It's actually been, I have to tell you, we've done this now twice before, amazing to witness the cooperation between the city, the state, and the county in bringing us together. It is unprecedented. We thought that would actually create degrees of difficulty, and when we had our very first meeting, and everyone was in the room, as they say in Hamilton, everyone was in the room, the room where it happened, we saw very quickly that there was a tremendous amount of support of each different individual in their capacity, and ultimately, we could see a path to victory in terms of getting this done. Lastly, we would not be standing here without so much community support from so many of our neighbors and wonderful organizations in South Los Angeles, far too many to acknowledge in this short time, but just say, "We really appreciate the trust that you have instilled in us, and we are going to continue to work extraordinarily hard every single day to earn it." Many people know that we've had a commitment to education in the Lucas family, and one of the things that I've said about this museum is that it is a school for schools. That's how we think of it. When George and I first got married and we talked about all the things that we wanted to do as the stewards of society's money, that's how we view the wealth that we have, it's for society. As the stewards of this money, he said to me, "Melody, don't spit in the ocean. Whatever you can do, do with scale." And so when we think about this museum, it's not just a museum, it is a place where not only students and children and adults, but schools and academics, people will come from all over the world to learn, and ultimately, thousands and tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of people will be served from this one building in all of the neighboring area, which made it so compelling. I talked about the fact that it was a little bit heartbreaking for us in terms of our own cities, then it not working out. We have to be honest with you, first in San Francisco and then in Chicago, it was tough for us. But when we have those tough moments, I always ask myself, "What is the universe supposed to be teaching me?" And what they were teaching us is that we were supposed to be in a community that had 100 schools within the proximity of our building. We were supposed to be in a community that is a promised zone, that we were supposed to be in a community where we could take 1,000 jobs, where we were supposed to be in a community where we could spur $1.2 billion of economic development, where we could leverage this gift in a way that would be transformative. That's where we were supposed to be, and that's where we are now with great enthusiasm. And lastly, one of the things people know about me, I care a lot about making sure this is a building for everyone, everyone. I grew up in Chicago. I grew up in a city. I used to take the bus to school. I used to go to museums and go to our parks and go and walk along our lakefront as a little kid with not a lot of money. And one thing that I knew is whenever I had a chance, whenever the day came when I was big, that I could do something, that I wanted to create a space where I belonged. And that is what this museum is going to be, a museum for everyone. L.A. is in a renaissance. It's brilliant to be here right now and exciting to see. Most important of all, it's exciting to see this vision that George has had, that he's been steadfast about, come to be. This is not a vanity project. This is something that we think ultimately will serve society well for years to come. So thank you, thank you, thank you for having us.
Well, for a very brief time, I actually grew up here, especially where the museum is going to be at USC. I became, that's where I learned movies. That's where I learned my craft. That's where I basically started my career, was in school here. And I've been very supportive of film schools, and then I realized that the whole concept of narrative art has been forgotten. And for me, one of the reasons I got into art in the first place, I was an anthropology major before that, was the power that art has to glue society together. You have to have common ideas, visions, common ideas of your faith, common ideas of who your leaders are, common ideas about your history. These were all told visually, first, I believe, controversial, but that's okay, but through the visual communication. Because visual communication, to me, is the ability to communicate to other people in an extremely emotional way. That is why visual communication, or some of it, at least for the last 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, 10,000 years, has been popular. It's designed to be popular. It's designed to let everybody in and have an emotional connection with the ideas that are common in a society. And when you have common ideas, you can build your little village, you can put a wall around it, you can all believe the same thing. When somebody jumps up and says they're going to try to get us, you're all together. And obviously, that's caused a lot of problems over the years, but it is the thing that glues a society together. Hopefully, eventually, the planet will realize that we have common values and common goals and common beliefs too. But we will pass through this phase of everybody sort of jockeying for position about what the real world looks like, but at the same time, it really looks like a myth, something that we believe in, it's not real, but we believe in it. It's our image of ourselves. It's what we think we are. And that's what art is supposed to do. We all know that it's just an idea, but in the end, it's the thing that tells us that this is what we, as a society, believe in, even if we don't do it 100%. But I use the example, and then I realized the popular arts, the popular narrative arts, which tell the story of society, have kind of been dismissed. And so that's one of the things that spurred me on to say, "This is, this kind of art is very important, and it's especially important to adolescents." Star Wars was done on a lark to say, "I want to take adolescents, 12-year-olds, and let them think outside the box." To say, "Forget everything they've taught you, forget it. Don't trust anybody over 30. Matter of fact, don't trust anybody over 15." What you want to do is say, "If I want sound to be in space, I'll make sound in space." You know? And it's through that idea that you can do anything you want to do. You can create a world whatever you want it to be, because if you can't imagine it, it won't happen. But if you can imagine it, if you can create it, even in a fantasy world, it will eventually come true. But you have to start with this, "I'm going to think outside the box, and I am going to create a world that I want it to be." And one of the best ways to do that, besides reading and writing books, is through the visual arts. Visual arts started with cave paintings. It's now, and not ended, it's now in the renaissance of movies. Movies is like the high end of visual arts. And that's why I put them all together in one place, because they all tell a story. And most of those stories are centered around our ideals, our aspirations, about what we want, what we believe in. You know, I use the example a lot with Norman Rockwell, who was able to tell a story in one picture. And it's one of the Four Freedoms, which is the freedom from want, which is the mother with the big turkey and everybody around the table smiling and everything. We know that's not true. We know it's Uncle Bill sitting over in the corner drunk, it's Betty and Jimmy who just got married screaming at each other, it's a bunch of kids running around throwing potatoes at everybody. That's what Thanksgiving really is, but we don't want to think of it that way. We want to think of it as a family gathering. We're Americans. We have a family unit. It's a family, and we see that picture and we say, "That's what we are. We aren't the reality," because the reality's kind of messy, "but we are the myth that we've created for ourselves to say, 'This is what we want to be. This is what we want to stand for. This is what we are.'" Narrative art basically does that. That's its job, whether it's to promote the church, and you have the Sistine Chapel, whether it's to promote Napoleon on his giant horse, or the Greeks. It's always about ideas of our history, of what we are, and that we hold together and we believe in. So what I've decided to do is build an institution that is mainly for adolescents, but it's also, Star Wars was for adolescents, but I think that that proved that it works for everybody from eight to 80, and even younger and even older, now that I'm getting older. The idea is that it's popular art. It's art that appeals to people emotionally and tells you something about who you are and what we believe in, and gives you that inspiration, which I'm hoping for, especially for, which is why we're down here, and my kids have gone to school down here and everything. You know, it's down here where kids need to be able to see outside the little road that they've got carved out for themselves, which is a terrible road, death, destruction, drugs, and they can't think of themselves or their environment outside that, to say, "Look, come here. You could be anything you want to be. You could be a pirate. You could be a spaceman. You could be a..." Just start thinking about it, drawing pictures about it, and imagining you being something much bigger. You know, short of Emperor of the Universe, that job's not been taken, I guess. But the, you know, it allows them to open up their mind and to go and have aspirations for something way beyond what they can see around them in their environment, and in a way that is much more enjoyable and exciting than, you know, the kinds of things that they get. You have to have an education, but you have to have the inspiration to use that education. You don't have the, you know, you don't want to, I have an educational foundation, I've been in this for 25 years, and the biggest question, obviously, is, "Why am I learning this?" What we're trying to do is put, in a sort of metaphorical way, this is why you're learning it. You're beginning to understand the way the world works, whether you're watching an N.C. Wyeth of two pirates on a beach, a Jesse Wilcock Smith of a mother reading to her daughter. These are images that have gone back through history, and we're going to show the history of where all this came from, that says primarily in the 20th century, this is what we believed. So I got to go. I got to nudge. But anyway, thank you so much. We really, you know, again, it was, I wanted to put it in my hometown, they said no. I wanted to, Melody wanted to put it in her hometown, they said no. We were both basically heartbroken, and then we started, we said, "Okay, let's clear the boards, let's find a place that really wants it." And we found a place that really wants it. Those cities wanted it very, very badly. They just didn't have the ability to pull it off. You have had the ability to pull it off. And what she said about, you've got counties and states and the cities and districts, you all came together and you made it happen. And you'd be surprised how hard that is in many cities to have that work, you know, without a huge, as I say, we're going to give you a museum, it's an educational institution, it's going to be paid for, it's going to be endowed. What's not to want about it? But as it turned out, you know, we found that it was harder than we thought. But we applaud you and thank you for your consideration and your hard work to make this thing come true. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me quickly recognize, so that I can go home to a happy home, my wife, who is the chair of the California Science Center. We have other members from USC, big supporters. Let's give all of them a round of applause. With that said, Mr. Price and Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Well, Mr., if they're game, we definitely would love to have a photo. So this council is going to be recessed for a couple of minutes. Members, let's get a photo around the center table. Members, let's get a photo around the center table.
Photographers on this side over here, please, nothing back there. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's reconsider, I believe it's item 12. So let's vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And it's my understanding that that's going to be continued until July 25?
And Mr. President, there are requests to send additional items forthwith, and that would be 30, 32, and 57.
That's forthwith, thank you very much.
And council has motions?
Post stand referred.
And that clears the desk.
Members, are there any announcements? Any announcement, members? Seeing none, can we all rise for adjourned motions, please? Members, adjourned motions, Mr. Rue? Adjourned motions, Mr. Coetz? Mr. O'Farrell, go ahead. Before you start, I'm going to ask the members, we're doing adjourned motions, we need everybody to please show respect for adjourned motions, thank you very much. I know it was an exciting presentation. Mr. O'Farrell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of weeks ago, Roger Smith, an actor best known on the hit TV show 77 Sunset Strip back in the 1960s, passed away. Roger Smith served two and a half years in the Navy Reserve in Hawaii, he sang at school events. James Cagney, the great actor, was there making a film, suggested that Roger Smith might try a film career, which he did after his Navy service ended and he signed with Columbia Pictures. He fulfilled the role of Jeff Spencer on 77 Sunset Strip until 1963. And he later married the great superstar singer, dancer, actress Ann-Margret of Bye Bye Birdie and Viva Las Vegas fame. In 1967, they married. In 1965, Roger Smith was diagnosed with a then very mysterious disease called myasthenia gravis, which afflicts about 200,000 Americans per year. That disorder disrupts the transmission of nerve signals to the muscles, causing severe muscle weakness. He brought attention to that disease and, through his example, was responsible for getting funding as a result of highlighting the fact that he was afflicted with that. He continued working when he was able, as the effects of the disease varied over time. He passed away this past June 4th on a Sunday at Los Angeles Hospital, after battling myasthenia gravis and a terminal illness at the age of 84. He is survived by his widow, the wonderful Ann-Margret, and his children, daughter Tracy, and sons Jordan and Dallas. And Madam President, I have another adjourned motion. This in the memory of Sister Alice Marie Quinn, who was very, very active in, at the Urban Corps of Los Angeles, in the 13th District, the First Council District, and several others with what she did. Sister Alice Marie was born on June 15, 1935, in Chicago, Illinois. After graduating from high school in Albuquerque, she entered the Daughters of Charity on September 24th, 1954, in St. Louis. After completing her religious formation, Sister Alice Marie began her professional training as a hospital dietitian. After her service as a hospital dietitian at Hotel Dew in New Orleans, Sister served as administrator of the newly-built Seton Province of the Daughters of Charity in Los Altos Hills before being sent to St. Vincent Medical Center in Los Angeles, where 40 years ago, she began the ministry which would occupy her heart for the next 40 years, St. Vincent Meals on Wheels, which became an institution in Los Angeles, the nation's largest privately-funded organizations of its kind. As executive director of St. Vincent Meals on Wheels, Sister would raise, rise every morning before dawn for an hour of prayer, then get to work overseeing the preparation and delivery of nearly 3,500 meals to the city's homeless, homebound, disabled, and terminally ill. Among the accolades she and St. Vincent garnered are the International Food Service Manufacturers' Association Silver Plate Award in 2006 for Outstanding Achievement in Specialty Food Services, and she was named Woman of the Year in 1988 by the State of California. In 2013, this city council declared the day before Thanksgiving as St. Vincent Meals on Wheels Day. She passed away after a very brief illness just this past Friday, days after celebrating her 82nd birthday. Sister Sam passed away of natural causes, surrounded by her family and Daughters of Charity at her bedside. She's survived by her sister Bridget Johnson and numerous nieces and nephews. I had the incredible pleasure of delivering homebound meals with her on occasion and serving in their soup kitchen on occasion as well. And it's a real shock that she passed away so suddenly, but what an incredible legacy she's leaving. Sister Sam is, her viewing and rosary will be held tonight at 5:30 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. at St. Vincent DePaul Church at 621 West Adams Boulevard. A mass and burial will be held at 10 a.m. at Resurrection Cemetery, 966 Potero Grande Drive in Rosemead. May Sister Alice Marie Quinn rest in peace, and may all of those who cross paths with her fulfill her legacy of giving and selflessness.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rue?
If I could join in that motion, she was an amazing woman. I was, like many, I'm sure many other council members had the fortunate opportunity to go visit her as a council member, visit St. Vincent Meals on Wheels. But even decades ago, when I was working in nonprofits, St. Vincent's Meals on Wheels was an institution, so her loss will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Farrell. I'd like to, with your permission, to be added to that adjourned motion as well. A big, just giant angel in our part of the world. My wife and I and our whole staff will be out delivering meals on Thursday morning of this week in memory of Sister.
Very well. Any other adjourned motions members? To my left, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.